A family-owned shop in Loganville, Sosby's Garage for all your automotive repair needs. We service all makes and models, Ford and domestic. We repair engines, alternators, brakes, alignments, AC systems and more. Using certified technicians with over ninety years of combined experience. We also offer same-day service for some repairs. Sosby's Garage, 200 Bay Creek Road in Loganville. Dependable, honest and fair. Look us up on Google or Facebook. We'll take good care of you.
Broadcasting live from the Subaru of Gwinnett studio inside the Sonesta Gwinnett Place Atlanta Hotel. It's time for Case in Point presented by Paradigm Security Services. We are the cornerstone of security in the Southeast.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to Case in Point again presented by Paradigm Security Services. I'm your host, Rick Strong, the President of Paradigm Security Services. And we're excited to be with you once again on today on Business Radio X. We're coming to you from the Subaru of Gwinnett studio located in the beautiful Sonesta Gwinnett Place Atlanta Hotel here in Duluth, Georgia. Each week we plan to feature businesses in Atlanta, especially those that serve Gwinnett County. And I just want to throw a quick shout out to my sponsor, Sosby's Garage. Just a real quickie, he's still looking for a good, solid technical mechanic. And he's well paid, but he expects good honesty. So give him a call, six seven eight eight two five two one two seven, John Sosby. Now each week, as I said, we plan to feature businesses and people. Now while all businesses have security concerns, not all are about physical security. And we will touch on that and all related aspects of security in some way through the course of each show. Now our guest today, I'm very happy to have with me, George Awukoo. And he is running for the Gwinnett County Commission Chair of course, Gwinnett County. And you know, there've been a lot of people running, a lot of people, a lot of talk. When Charlotte decided not to run, of course, it opened the field wide. And we've got a lot of good candidates. George is one of them, one of the best ones, I will have to say, looking back at his background and everything. But I wanted to give him an opportunity to come on. George is a twelve-year-plus resident of Gwinnett County. He's a small business owner and a family man. He's worked with Gwinnett County officials, Gwinnett officials on several projects as an outside Georgia state licensed professional civil engineer. And he is also aware of many of the problems facing our Gwinnett County concerning roads, sewer, water, outdoor recreation improvement, development, business development, that type of thing. So George, welcome here and thank you for coming on the show.
Thank you, Rick.
Let's start out with my typical question. Who is George Awukoo? Where did you come from? Where were you born? How'd you get here? What got you into this?
Thank you for this question. My background is, I was born in Ghana, West Africa. I lived and schooled there for most of my youth and then got to move to the United Kingdom, which is Great Britain. I lived there for a period of ten years, had my first two kids there. And whilst there, did my masters in foundation engineering and worked in various capacities with both private and, and public companies. And then in nineteen ninety-eight, I had the opportunity of moving to the US. I've been in the Gwinnett County area for probably twelve years now and had our last child here in the US. I have my own business, which is an engineering consultant and also do on the side landscape installation when the opportunity rises. And I guess that's about it. I live in Duluth now with my second wife, who is from the Dominican Republic. And so I have to speak and learn the Spanish language.
That'd be interesting. I lived in New Mexico, grew up in New Mexico, but unfortunately, I didn't spend a lot of time learning the language, the Spanish language. I just knew when people were saying bad things about me and when to fight as a kid growing up. That was about all I learned of the Spanish, but I do know those words.
Okay.
But you know, there's a lot going on here. You've got a business, you've got all the trials and tribulations that come with a business owner. Why in the world would you want to run for the Gwinnett County Chair for the commission?
That's also a good question. Rick, first and foremost, there's nowhere else in this whole wild world where an individual with my background could be as successful as I am right now. It's only in America that you can make your dreams come true.
Amen.
So I want to say thank you and the opportunity given me. I'd like to be in a position where I can serve. And that's what mainly when you're an engineer, you do is you tend to serve your clients. And over the years, when I came from the UK, in the UK, when you do a design, it could take you two, three, four years to get a seat on the ground. In Ghana, it's, you don't need a design, you just build. But in the UK, there are rules, regulations, just like here, rules, but it takes forever to get any project done. So when I came into this country and I could see a design on a job where it's been designed and within three months, they already, they already started breaking ground and things going. I was astonished. I didn't believe it. Well, fast forward now, it's taking very long to get the same, it's creeping towards the same situation as we had in the UK. Which is very much like working in New York or what I hear in California. It takes forever to get your permit approved and it takes forever to get break ground. Plus the cost of things are skyrocketing.
Yep.
So when I meet developers and they asked, and I said, why aren't you, why aren't you in Gwinnett? What's, what's the deal with, you know? Say, well, things are getting more tough, you know? It's much easier for us to go build somewhere else than come and keep up with what's going on in Gwinnett. So it got me thinking and what it's very worrying is if you notice the cost of homes, it's going high and higher. So those in the middle age, when, and, and it, and it's, how are they going to be able to afford these homes in Gwinnett? How are we going to be able to provide homes for our first responders, our teachers, you know, those who rely on, are not super rich? A time is going to come where if we are not very careful, maybe not just Gwinnett, but the whole South in this Atlanta area, houses are going to be the same cost as in New York and California. And then we're going to sit back and say, what happened? And, and those are some of the motivations. I think that we can approach, we can approach this whole, those whole construction and development with common sense approach. We don't have to wholesome, take all the rules and regulations, most of it by the way, which I believe is coming from these blue states. And we're just taking the wholesome and trying to apply it here and it's just making cost of construction and cost of it so, so much expensive. So that's the motivation and the opportunity to be able to use my skill, which is basically problem solving as an engineer, we solve problems. I can bring that to bear in the commission if elected.
Well, I know that the one thing that we don't need is a lot of, a lot of the residents and stuff up in the blue states that are tired of it. They don't like it. They don't like the taxation. They don't like the high prices. I welcome them to come down here, but don't bring your high prices, your high, your ideals down here to where it ends up, we end up just creating a blue state down here that is high in taxes, high in costs, high, I mean, we don't need that. We need to keep common sense approach.
Thank you.
To development here. And I know that everybody that goes into this office or runs for office has priorities. What would you say your top three priorities are coming in? I won't just ask you your top priorities, but say maybe your top three priorities for coming in here, looking at this as basically from the outside in and then being in as a part of it. What would you say your three top priorities are?
I would say priority number one would be to keep Gwinnett great. Meaning what is it that attracted me and what is it that is attracting a whole bunch of folks to move into Gwinnett? We have some of the best schools. We have low crime and we have low taxes and we have good infrastructure. These are things that we in Gwinnett can sell to developers. If we can maintain and keep these issues, there's this good schools, low crime and low taxes, we can keep it going. We can bring in the best and the most talented companies to here in Gwinnett so that we can all benefit. So I'd like to say number one thing is keeping Gwinnett great. Number two is, and what I mean by Gwinnett great is making sure our schools stay at the top and low crime and whatever it takes to make sure that our taxes stay low. And two will be to solve this issue about transportation. Anytime I would go for a zoning or there's a zoning issue or there's some, someone trying to get development going in the county, it's always, you always hear the folks who come to oppose would have an issue with transportation, saying there's too much traffic on our roads. What we need really is to invest in our infrastructure, meaning we need to take advantage of new technology. Basically, we are going to be inheriting a 5G technology, which would allow for very quick interaction between signals. And the future cars that are coming would also be able to be communicating with each other as well as the signals. So I believe that down the line, we're going to have a very good way of controlling traffic and making sure it runs smoothly. Folks have talked about the bus, rapid bus transit system. I'd like to revisit that. I know there was a review that was done recently and probably they might put it before the citizens of Gwinnett vote again. But we need to look carefully at what this bus system is currently doing. We have buses that run and I believe I heard someone say, we have a budget of, we have, what I've seen is, okay, without being too straight down to, the buses are running almost empty. And it's costing us money. I think we need to look at a different way of running these bus systems. I believe where we can have these buses run between the cities, not running from north as the Gwinnett County down to City of Atlanta. Instead, we'd need something that would go between the cities, like from Snavell to DeCulah, from DeCulah to.
Yeah, inter-county.
Yeah, inter-county and make it easier for us to, you know, travel. Also like to see a situation where we have wider sidewalks, which would allow for folks to be able to cycle or buy, you know, cyclists to move back and forth and then also use it for pedestrian. But the most important thing is I'd like to see a situation where Gwinnett County becomes the destination, one, this one destination, the destination for anyone wanting to invest in the Southeast. Would look at Gwinnett County as their ideal home because they provide low crime, good schools for their employees and also lower taxes. And I call this Gwinnett first approach, meaning that if your business sets up in Gwinnett and you stay long enough with us, you can see a decline in the taxes you, the company pays. So you, you walk with us, you swim with us, you live with us, you hire the folks in the community. We would also appreciate that by working with you down the line to see a situation where we don't want you to come in, within ten years, you've gone. No, you stay with us ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the line, you should be seeing your taxes going down. And to be able to achieve that, we would need what partnership of Gwinnett is doing now, which is identifying companies of the future. Biotech companies, pharmaceutical companies, companies that do IT and invite them to say, look, we have all these excellent things. We will work with you, come set up shop here. We would actually approach the higher education school institutes that we have here and partner and help to have them provide, does the companies provide like apprenticeship or provide a sort of system where they can bring in the kids who are studying to come and work in the industries during the summer break? And then by the time they finish or graduate, they have ready jobs for them. So we want to keep our youth. We don't want to train them and then let them start looking for jobs outside the county. We want to make sure that they also stay. This is a model that is done in Germany, by the way, where it's called apprenticeship. So you have folks, not everyone is a book, book person, some, some folks just are not cut for going to higher education.
Four, five years, ten-year colleges.
Mm-hmm. That's the thing. So those are the three priorities I have.
Fantastic. I know that with our Gwinnett system, and I'm very familiar with the, the system as far as they bringing in with, bringing in work, bringing in businesses, where they can bring them in. One of the big priorities is to have our schools train these people that can fit in these jobs. Cause knowing they have an employment base, employee base is what brings a lot of these international companies here. And that's something that I know that they're in the process of trying to stay, Gwinnett Tech is really on top of it, of making sure people are well-developed and focused on what they want to do, what they're good at. The old thing is find a job you love, you'll never work a day in your life. Well, why push them into a four-year college or ten years' worth of degrees when they really want to do something with their hands, do technical or whatever? There's so many jobs, especially in tech. But moving on, we've already talked a little bit about the infrastructural needs and future development. One of the really, 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 really big issues, I know to me, to Gwinnett Place CID, to Gwinnett County as a whole rule, is the development or redevelopment of the Gwinnett Place Mall area. I know that's been talked about in a couple of the things that you had with the chamber and with the CID and those discussions, because that's a really big issue. Gwinnett Place is really in the heart of the county. I mean, what goes on here, if it thrives and develops, affects the whole county. I know you've got the Mall of Georgia up there, but that's still, that's more like you're at the arteries running down your arms or legs. The heartbeat is right here in the Gwinnett Place area for our county. What are your plans to look at trying to assist in getting that going or just what are your views on it for Gwinnett Place?
Well, as much as I prefer the private sector to run its own business and have very little government interference, like you just said, this is the heart of Gwinnett County. So sometimes we need government to step in, but not stepping in a way where it would determine losers and winners, but to rather encourage and prod these investors to proceed or to go in the direction that would benefit everyone. To that effect, I don't know if you've noticed, but we used to have on Pleasant Hill Road, an old Kroger building, Target. And if you were to go out there today, I don't know, by some fluke of magic, all these are now thriving, you know, businesses where they, I don't know, mainly catering for the Korean community.
Right.
But that's what has happened. So what I'd like to do is basically engage with the CID, engage with the local communities and developers that live in and work around that area. And then approach the property owners, put them all together and, and, and find out if what the CID is proposing, which I've seen those models, is a mixed use. If we can together provide and encourage the owners to move in that direction. I would not want to be in a chair where we would use taxpayers' money to buy this piece of property from the owner just to develop it.
Total agreement.
But I would prefer that we will be able to nudge and, and encourage and bring in investors. Now, what I've said to Joel and is that day one, when I get in my office, if elected, what I'll do is I will set up an office also in the mall. I'll try and find a place there and invite all developers that would want to invest, investors, using the county's financial leverage as well as all the infrastructure and say, hey, we have good schools. What else do you need? We have low crime. We have all the sewer and all the road networks that you need. We will take care of providing some of the needed development infrastructure, which would be like stormwater, the sewer, we would upgrade them. So your cost for redeveloping this area is actually being offset by us, the county, providing these infrastructures, which we need, by the way.
We need it anyway.
So by so doing, that will reduce significantly the cost of any investor and developer putting up a mixed-use development. Plus, plus, like I keep saying, we would give them a situation where we would say, there are some rules which will curtail the heights of the building. We can look at the codes and see where we can make the codes work flexible enough to allow for this investor to develop the place. Because remember what I said, the cost of living and the cost of construction, the cost of everything is going up. And so if we can reduce those costs to the investor by, by taking advantage of the infrastructure, which needs that we already have to put in place, the investor will win, we would win, and the local community would win as well. It's a win-win situation for all. Plus, since he's going to be in the community for a long time, he can see his tax liability going down. So that is something that I'd like to, but I might do be opening the first, day one to investors, actually go hunting for investors to come and develop that place.
Well, I know that I'm totally on board. I don't, I'm not in for the county buying. I am in for the county supporting and there are so many tax incentives that have been developed here with Gwinnett County that, you know, in areas that can be applied to encourage that growth for the infrastructure and for the live, work, play.
Model.
Multiple use, multi-use capacity there. I'd love to see a multi-use facilities in and around that with restaurants and living and the typical thing that a lot of the millennials are looking for is someplace like that. And I would love to see that thing come up. Now we've talked a little bit about the transportation needs and I won't go back into that because I know that I'm in agreement, we've got to do something. And just doing the same old, same old is not an acceptable approach. But you know, the economy, Gwinnett, we basically, people are calling it equal to the depression. I don't agree at all. Is it a little, is it somewhat recessionary? Of course, of course, it's a little recessionary because you have all these people out of work. But a lot of these people, I saw something in the, somewhere that said forty-two percent of the jobs that go down aren't coming back for these people to come back. And I, I don't know where they get that forty-two percent because that's absurd. But yes, there are businesses that are going to be, you know, closed because of this, but there's a lot of them have managed to survive through here. And there's others going to be built, there's others going to be open. We're coming out of this and I think we'll be out of it a lot sooner than a lot of people do. I have a lot more positivity in this thing than a lot of people think. But what are you going to help to put into place or what are your thoughts of how to make Gwinnett recession-proof? Which you can never make it proof, but at least ward that off.
Well, going back to what I said earlier, if we can make Gwinnett the number one destination for investors coming to the Southeast, that in itself would attract and open up a new horizon of job opportunities and, you know, development in, in, in Southeast. But I also like to see a situation in which using the purchasing power of the county, we will say, Gwinnett-based companies will be given the priority. This is done in DeKalb County and I think City of Atlanta, where they give points when it comes to procurement to local-based industries. So I'd like to help our Gwinnett-based industries or companies in, in that sense as well, in that if you, we have, for instance, a need for supplying, I don't know, dump trucks or, or, or Asfa, whatever it is. We would look at Gwinnett-based companies first by giving them the opportunity so that we can help them grow in this tough economic times, which like you said, I don't think we'll be in for a long time. So that's one of the things. And also we would like to hold back on any, any of these, I've heard few folks writing about increasing tax, property taxes and whatnot. I don't think this is the right time to be hiking taxes. And so we can hold, yeah, we can hold back on those. And, and, and then also, like I said, if we can have our Gwinnett Tech and higher learning institutions plug into these companies that would come or are already here. Then again, we know for sure that we have ready employment for folks who live in Gwinnett County. But most importantly, I'd like to encourage and work with Economic Development Section to find ways to encourage and grow our homegrown, small, medium-sized businesses. And if it comes with giving them tax breaks, that's what we'll have to do.
Well, and I've seen a lot of, a lot of separation as far as almost isolation. We've got a tremendous Korean and Asian workforce population, business owner, especially around the mall, which I think is great. Now, the other side of the coin is they have a tendency to promote their businesses too strictly within the Korean community and everything. And I know that Partnership Gwinnett and the CID and several of the places have really worked hard to open that up and help to make people understand, or help people to understand that the more open you are, the more bilingual you are in your signage and everything else, that you can bring more business. You'll get the support from this community if they, you know, if you ask for it and if you work for it. What can you do from your position to encourage that opening up and that working relationship within the county, within the community to where everybody is easy, feels easier working with everybody and it just kind of flow smoothly? I'm sorry, that was, that was one you weren't expecting.
No, 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 that's fine. The Koreans gave me a break. When I, when I, when I started my own firm and I have to be very thankful to them, I wouldn't be this successful had it not been for the Korean community. I became their number one choice when it comes to design, engineering, site development. And that was in two thousand and three, I got the chance to start working with them. There's several malls, strip malls and businesses that I've designed churches for Koreans. But I would say at one time, ninety percent of my job was with the Koreans. Once they accept you, they open up and they are extremely hardworking folks, actually.
Absolutely.
They work very hard. And what I can say for sure is it, and it still hits, why is SK, that battery plant, why is it in Jackson County? When this is considered the Korean capital of, I will say, the Southeast, why didn't they bring the SK plants to Gwinnett County? Rick?
Well, I'd say probably because they weren't friendly enough as far as the working relationship. I mean, that's a guess, I have no idea.
Neither do I, but I would say if, 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 if I, if, if I were to have been in, unless we as Venetians weren't interested in that kind of a business, but if I.
We didn't ask for it.
Yes, but given the fact that we have all these Koreans here, you know, I would say before even a business leaves Korea, we should have known that they are looking for a place to set up shop. And working with the Koreans here, we, we should have had that SK plant here. I mean, it's one of those, the battery plants for cars, it's one of those futuristic companies. But anyway, it's already, you know, it's already gone, but.
But there are others that will come.
That's right. So, so what I'm trying to get at is using my connections with the Koreans and trust me, they, they really want to. I mean, I've spoken to several of them and they really are interested in, 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 in competing and having folks compete for their jobs and, 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 and open up. And, and, and so I would try and work and I will work with them to try and make sure that we bring in these industries, even before it gets, where it gets out to the US that they are looking for a place or destination to set up shop. We will already be way ahead of the game and make sure that they do really do come to, think of Gwinnett as a home where they can, after all, most of their, their community lives here.
Exactly.
Yeah, they have all their schools, the churches.
They live, work and play here.
Yeah, yeah. So if I take it to West Point or take it down to, what is it, Macon, where they are the commune? I mean, why not here unless we're saying those are not the industries we want in our backyard? I don't know.
Well, you know, it's important, we've got the most diverse county anywhere and which is one of the best things that we've got going for us is we are so diverse. But here's the big question. Talk is cheap, everybody talks, everybody has a good spiel. But when it comes right down to it, what distinguishes you from your opponents? What is it about you that would make you different?
Well, I would say if we want to keep Gwinnett great, if we want to enjoy all this good schools and good facilities that we have, low crime, I would recommend that we vote a Republican and vote Republicans to hold the leadership in the county. That said, what distinguishes me from the others? That said, what distinguishes me from the other two candidates running on the Republican ticket is as an engineer, one, we always solve problems. We make the impossible possible. And when we're solving the problems, we have two key components to worry about. The design is a mere formality. It's not an issue. But we always have to take care of the public's health and safety and then we have to save the client money. So that's a balancing act. Um, I was, um, well, before I digress. So, and then also my background, basically I've seen how things are developed in, uh, a situation where you have the rules, but no one follows it.
Mm-hmm.
And they have the rules, but they follow it too rigidly to the extent that it makes it very, almost impossible to develop. And so that background where you have the wild, wild west versus where you have extremely like, I would say socialist, controlled everything, I can be able to bring that to bear when I'm thinking in, in the process and the thought process of, uh, a decision-making. So that I think would distinguish me from the other two candidates running on the Republican ticket. You know, being an engineer who solves problems day in, day out in balancing the needs of the safety, health and safety of the public with saving the client cost. It's always there in the back, back of my mind. And then the background experience I've had, working on three different continents and mixing up with all the development rules, regulations. So that sets me apart, yeah.
Well, you know, I like the fact of the engineering because, you know, you do solve problems. You look at it, you analyze, you resolve. Uh, one thing I always learned from my dad and I tell my wife, even my father-in-law had the same thing, bless him before he died, nothing is impossible. Nothing can't be done. If you give me something and say, if I look at something and I, I know that there's gotta be a way to do it, but I need something to happen, I get busy in my head and I figure out how to make it happen, how to, how to, how to design it, how to work with my hands, how to do something to make it happen. And that's what we need in this county is somebody that can step back, look at it, know nothing's impossible. Gwinnett Place Mall is a prime example. We've been working on it for years. And some people have said, there's just nothing we can do. Well, I don't agree. And I know the CID doesn't agree and I know the county itself doesn't agree. There are things that can be done. Are we willing to do them?
That's true.
And that's what you've got to bring to the table if you're gonna run for this is you're in charge of a very large, very unique county. Are you willing to do the things that you're not, you've got to do? Are you willing to open up your mind and think all possibilities are there? And it sounds like you're pretty well on that track is, you know, nothing is impossible. So, I mean, and I agree, nothing is impossible. Look at a man from Ghana who's sitting here in Gwinnett County, running for the office of the Chair of the Commission. Uh, that, that proves nothing is impossible.
Amen.
Well, don't know whether you'll get it or not, but best of luck.
Thank you.
And, um, you know, I just wanna thank you very much for coming in here and sitting down and talking with us.
Thank you, Rick.
Well, I appreciate everybody very much. I wanna thank you for joining us on Case in Point presented by Paradigm Security Services. And remember you can join us live every Wednesday at 11:30 in the morning. Or you can listen to our show anytime you want by going to businessradiox.com, clicking on the Gwinnett Studio and then of course click on Case in Point. Join us next week at 11:30. When we will talk with business leaders about their businesses and related security issues. In fact, I believe that Rich McCormick is coming on next week to talk to us about, uh, what he's doing and, and his, his race. Thanks again to my guest, George Awuku.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it. And of course to our producers, JJ sitting back in there, Mike sitting next to him over his shoulder and Miss Amanda sitting back there running the show. So I would just remember that Paradigm Security Services, we cover more than just your assets.